I'd like to call the September 11th, 2014 meeting of the Williamsburg City Council to order. Would you call the roll, please? Ms. Scott?
Here.
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 Before we begin today's meeting, I'd like to just take a quick minute to remember, in the words of a former leader, a day that will live in infamy. Today's September 11th, and I think that means something to all of us. And I can think of no better way to memorialize that day than to have a free democratic meeting of a city council, and that's what we're doing today. So, I hope as we proceed with this meeting, we will all keep in mind the events of this day thirteen years ago, and remember the people who lost their lives in that day. So, with that, we'll proceed with our meeting. First order of business is council minutes for August 11th, 2014, and August 14th, 2014. Are there any additions or corrections?
I'll move to approve.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Aye.
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 Next order of business are matters of special privilege, and as you all know, we are engaged in the goals, initiatives, and outcome process for the next biennium, and this is a time for the public to comment on that process. So if anyone wishes to address the goals, initiatives, and outcomes, and again, City Council has had a retreat last Saturday. We've spent Monday dealing with more issues of that, essentially our work session as a continuation of that retreat. Tonight at seven o'clock in the Community Building, there'll be a public meeting for additional input, and following that, there'll be work sessions in October, and a council meeting in October, moving toward adoption hopefully in November. But that's the process. So if anyone wishes to address any particular issue for the goals, initiatives, and outcome, now would be the time to do it. If you please come forward and state your name and address. If not, again, I encourage all of you to attend tonight's meeting, which again, seven o'clock in the Community Building, and that will be an opportunity to engage with other citizens, with City Council, and with City staff about the development of the goals, initiatives, and outcomes for the next biennium in the city. Our next order of business are public hearings, and we have three. The first is PCR 14-16, Copper Fox Distillery Special Use Permit. Ms. Murphy?
Mayor Holman and members of council, Copper Fox Distillery is proposing to operate a micro-distillery at 901 Capital Lanning Road, which requires a special use permit in the corridor business district. The applicant proposes to convert existing motel buildings into buildings used for the distillery to include retail and distillery, storage and production, office and meeting rooms, barrel storage, a gin garden, and a residence for the owner. The 2013 plan designates this parcel as corridor commercial land use. Corridor commercial land use is intended to promote the city's economic development policy for its limited remaining highly visible commercial sites. Land to the north, south, and east are designated as corridor commercial land use, with land to the west designated as low-density single-family, and that's in this area with the commercial being in this area. The majority of this property, along with the properties to the north, south, and east, are zoned corridor business district B2, with the rear of the property and the properties to the west being zoned single-family dwelling district RS2. The site is approximately 6.44 acres, fronts on Capital Lanning Road, and is surrounded by Forest Hills Drive and Parkway Drive. The two existing entrances on Capital Lanning Road will be used by the distillery, with gates being installed for security after hours. The entrance off Forest Hill Drive will be used for the distiller's residence. The pond at the rear of the property collects runoff from the site, and since no additional buildings or pavement is proposed at this time, no additional stormwater management is required. The applicant proposes to repurpose and reuse the buildings on the property, with renovations being done in four phases. Phase one will consist of using buildings A and B, which are the first two buildings adjacent to Forest Hill Drive, for the installation of a small still, production, storage, grain storage, and offices. Building G, which is behind the main building, is proposed to be used for retail and reception until completion of phase three. After phase three, this building will be used for event planning. Phase two will consist of renovating building I at the rear of the property into the distiller's residence, which is this building here, and will be the main building being renovated into a distillery with a large still, cooking, malt and ken, mill, fermenters, bottling, introduction room, presentation and tours, a reception area, and retail areas, and that's the main building up front. This phase will also include screening the mechanical and delivery area behind the building. The final phase, phase four, will convert buildings E, F, and H along Parkway Drive and Forest Hill Drive into bottling, malt house, and barrel storage with the planting of a gin herb garden, and that's these buildings in this area, and that's the proposed herb garden. Building C, which currently has 16 guest rooms, will be renovated and continued to be used as guest rooms. The zoning ordinance limits a micro-distillery to 15,000 barrels a year. Initially, the owner expects a production capacity in the range of 175 to 200 barrels a year, 1,600 barrels a year in five years, with a maximum capacity of about 3,200 barrels per year. The proposed use of a micro-distillery for the site is an appropriate use for the property. The reuse of this former motel property into a distillery will bring another use to the Capital Lanning Road area to help diversify the economy of this area and the city. It will help with the revitalization of this area by bringing additional customers and visitors to the Capital Lanning Road corridor. Planning Commission held a public hearing on August 20th. No one spoke at the public hearing. Their recommendation to City Council is to approve the special use permit to allow a micro-distillery conditioned upon the Forest Hill Drive entrance into the property being used for the sole purpose of the owners to enter and exit the property for their new home at the rear of their property. The use of Forest Hill Drive, entrance by trucks, buses, and heavy equipment shall be prohibited. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have. Mr. Rick Wiseman with Copper Fox is here, and John Tarly is also here, if you have any questions.
Carolyn, thank you very much. Let me turn to council to see if there are any questions before I open the public hearing.
I won't be discussing or voting today as my employer is counsel for the applicant.
Anything else? Thank you, Carolyn. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to this matter to come forward, state your name and address. I have one speaker's card, and that's Mr. John Tarly. Sorry. John Welton.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor and members of council. I'm John Tarly, 112 Yorkshire Drive, counsel for the applicant. Mr. Wiseman's here along with Vernon Getty, who is the professional realtor who put this deal together. I know you've all met Mr. Wiseman, and many of you have visited the distillery in Sperryville. As I mentioned in planning commission meeting, it was about eight years ago, it was eight years ago in August, when Wiseman's single malt whiskey had its first bottling. So, we're talking about an established entity that with proven products, that is proposing to not only open a business here but become a resident and live on-site at the facility. Can't add anything to Ms. Murphy's presentation, but I do want to address just a couple of questions that were raised in the planning commission hearing to the council. ARB and planning commission was interested in what plans were for the footprint of the motor court there at the hotel, and it's going to be a truly adaptive reuse of the property. There's not going to be, going to use the buildings and the footprint that are there and preserve the motor court look. Each of those buildings are going to be used, as Ms. Murphy went through in her presentation. Mr. Wiseman had, second, Mr. Wiseman had visited the neighbors in Forest Hills area, and as opposed to the concerns that, you know, one would anticipate on smells and sounds, as Mr. Wiseman said, much of the concern is whether the pool and the pond were going to remain. Obviously, nothing going to be done with the pond, and the jury's still out on the pool, depending upon the repair. But to address the issues that one might expect, as you know, there is some use of smoke from cherry wood or apple wood that is used in the process, and it's likened to the smell of a fireplace as it goes through the air, and it won't be a full-time deal, unlike the brewery, of course. Third, timing is an issue. This is obviously one more step in the closing of the contract between the city and Copper Fox. Upon the closing, Mr. Wiseman anticipates that within months, buildings A and B will be converted to permit a small still, some barrels to begin, and once he obtains the license, to begin bottling on-site prior to the large still being down here. And then shortly thereafter, within a year of that time, we expect that barley will begin being malted, and then there will be a true Williamsburg product that comes out there as opposed to from Sperryville. Final point, again, I know that many of you may have gone through the tour that was out there. I have, and on a lazy Sunday afternoon, you know, there were 60 people in a tour, in two separate tours that were out there, and Copper Fox, Mr. Wiseman anticipates that this is going to be a great site to improve that entrance card or there on Capital Lanning Road and be a great addition to our community. So with that, we'd ask for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Appreciate it. Does anyone else wish to speak to this issue? If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action. Mr. Friling?
A while back when we were looking at zoning changes, and we were considering the idea of allowing certain uses like the micro-brewery, micro-distillery, micro-cideri with a special use permit in certain areas of the city, we did it because we wanted to draw a type of business to this community that would diversify the economy and also add value as a complementary element of tourism destination. And at that time, I don't think Mr. Wiseman was on any of our radar screens. I don't think Williamsburg was necessarily on his radar screen as a place that he might want to open up the second location. But we felt it was a good thing to do then, and we put it in as a special use permit portion of the zoning because we felt like there was some degree of oversight that was incumbent upon the planning commission and council to safeguard the citizens and surrounding neighbors' interests as a little bit more of a slightly commercial venture might come close to neighborhoods in certain areas of the city. And it worked, and thanks to Mr. Wiseman, we now have a real potential project here that accomplishes those goals that we initially set out to do, at least partially. I think we might even consider welcoming some more if people are interested. But this is what we were hoping for and looking for, and he is providing, and what I think is, as Mr. Tarly pointed out, an adaptive reuse of an existing fairly attractive piece of property, and it does it in a great way that's sympathetic to the more recent history of the Williamsburg community, and certainly to the surrounding area and the neighbors, not to mention the fact it could be a catalyst for further redevelopment of an area of the city that we've struggled with coming up with ideas on how to get that moving on the redevelopment path. And I think it shows that we can set the groundwork, set up the structure, but we have to sometimes rely on the private sector to come in and do, and that's what Mr. Wiseman is trying to do. And because of that, and because of the fact that everybody I've talked to in the community who has been aware of this and who's commented on it, has enthusiastically supported it, and I do as well.
Well said. Doug?
I would only repeat what's already been said and what I've said in the past. I'm comfortable with this application and the timing of it. I think it works for him, it works for us.
Judy?
I think Mr. Friling said it very well, and I agree, and I only have one question for later, is what do you need besides juniper berries and a gin garden? It's a gin herb garden. Oh, sorry.
Rick, thank you very much. I think you've heard from council in the past and from the planning commission and from staff of what a terrific idea this is, and how well you've approached it, and again, the adaptive reuse of what is a really signature property in Williamsburg is really important. So, we appreciate all the effort you've put into it to this point, and we look forward to being partners with you as we go forward. With that, I'll turn to council for action.
Mr. Mayor, I move the council approve the special use permit with the proposed condition that Ms. Murphy mentioned.
Second?
Have a motion and a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Aye.
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 Abstain.
Thank you, and congratulations. We're looking forward.
Thank you. I'm so proud to be on the verge of doing a part of the show.
Thank you. Our next public hearing is PCR 14-17, Planned Development Urban District Conditions Amendment for City Law Apartments, Proposed Ordinance 14-22. Mr. Nestor?
As was the case with Copper Fox Distillery, this is another adaptive reuse project. The former Quality Inn and Suites at 1400 Middle Street was approved in June 2012 for conversion from a 118-room bedroom hotel to City Law Office Student Apartment Building with 94 one-bedroom student apartments. As you recall, this required creating a new planned development urban district and rezoning the property to that district. The 2013 comprehensive plan, which was adopted after the original approval, designates this parcel as urban residential land use, which is implemented by the PDU Planned Development Urban District. The existing zoning for city law offices is PDU with the conditions that were approved when it was rezoned. The proposal under consideration today keeps the same PDU district but revises the development plan, management plan, and conditions attached to the previous rezoning, and those need to be approved as part of this request. The original development plan called for 94 one-bedroom student apartments plus a two-bedroom manager's apartment for a total of 95. It was proposed that 49 of the one-bedroom apartments would house two students, and 45 will house one student, which resulted in a total occupancy of 143 students. This layout was based on a conceptual floor plan of the building. After the building was purchased and when the detailed plans were prepared, only 90 apartments were constructed, and of the 89 student apartments, 75 were configured as one-bedroom apartments with a study. And the basic proposal is to convert these into two-bedroom apartments by converting the study into a second bedroom. This will increase the occupancy from the originally approved 143 students to 164 students if there's only one student per bedroom. The current PDU district, which was revised after the original approval, allows two unrelated people in a one-bedroom apartment and four unrelated people in a two-bedroom apartment. So, the maximum allowed by the PDU district would be 332 people in this building based on the number of apartments. The proposed residential density is 35.4 dwelling units per net acre. When we adopted the new plan and made the implementation changes to the PDU district, it was changed so that no density is specified for the PDU district. It's decided on a case-by-case basis, and zoning ordinance says that in deciding on the density to be allowed, council shall consider the quality of the building and site design, and how the scale and character of the development relates to its immediate surroundings and to the midtown planning district as, planning area as a whole. Now, looking at this floor plan, in red, this is the ground floor, and these are the three floors above. In red are the locations of the one-bedroom apartments. All of the other apartments are two-bedrooms. So, these three two-bedrooms are now bedroom with study. They would be converted to two-bedroom apartments in this proposal. Doing the conversion will increase the parking requirement from 146 to 154 spaces. So on this site plan, this is New Hope Road, Middle Street, this is the building, and there would be one parking space added here, three parking spaces added here, and four parking spaces added there, so they will be able to meet the ordinance's required parking. Putting the parking in required a small waiver of landscape requirements in this area, which has been done and approved by the zoning administrator. As part of the proposal, a revised management plan has been submitted, both the original and revised management plans, call for full-time live-in resident manager, in-house maintenance team, key card access to the building, closed circuit TV cameras for security, and a resident This property is not located in Architectural Review District, so ARB approval is not required. Looking at the proposal, I would note that City Law Office is located in an area designated by the 2013 plan as urban residential land use, and the plan notes that the proximity of this area to college makes it very attractive for helping to meet the need for college student housing. The revised proposal accommodates additional students but is essentially similar to the original proposal. It's consistent with the housing plan and the comprehensive plan, and also with the statement of intent for the PDU district. Planning Commission held its public hearing on this request on August 20th. Planning Commission recommended to council by a six-o vote that the proposal be approved with the addition of conditions that limit occupancy in one-bedroom apartments to one student and in two-bedroom apartments to two students. That is detailed in your proposed ordinance 14-22B. Planning Commission's recommendation approves the proposed density of 35.4 dwelling units per net acre, the submitted development plan, and the management plan. So to implement Planning Commission's recommendation, council would need to approve proposed ordinance Since Planning Commission's recommendation, the applicant has requested, and you have a copy of the applicant's letter, that the portion of the Planning Commission recommendation that sets an occupancy limit of one student for a one-bedroom apartment and two for a two-bedroom apartments be modified, and that would allow 164 students, be modified to instead allow a maximum occupancy for the building of 256 persons. In talking about the reasons for that, the applicant said that based on its prior use as a hotel, there were many instances where more than 332 people occupied the building. Went on to say, we believe that the maximum 256 occupancy level would not be detrimental to the safety or welfare of the students occupying the building, nor create any other undue hardship. This appears to be below national averages for student housing. So, the zoning, the original approval was for 143 students. The default limits in the PDU district would allow 332 students. Planning Commission recommended 164 students, of course, plus the manager, manager's family, and the applicant is asking for 256 total occupancy for the building, which is sort of in the middle of between what Planning Commission recommended and the maximum of what the ordinance would allow. So to approve it as requested by the applicant would require the adoption of proposed ordinance 14-22B, which establishes a maximum occupancy of 256 persons and deletes the occupancy limits on a per-bedroom basis. So, that is what is, what was recommended by the Planning Commission and what's been requested by the applicant. Be glad to answer any questions now. We're at the conclusion of public hearing.
Thank you, Reed. Let me turn to council for questions before we open the public hearing.
So, Mr. Nestor, the originally approved plan was 143, the max is 332. What Planning Commission recommended was 164.
Correct. That's...
What was the original request of Planning Commission at their hearing?
The original request from the applicant was for the number of apartments, the one-bedroom and two-bedroom, not for...
So there was no discussion...
The applicant's request was not for a specific limitation.
So then during the Planning Commission conversation, there was consideration given to changing the configuration of these apartments, but in doing that, they then wanted a limit placed on the number of people per bedroom?
Planning Commission.
And so that was something the applicant was, about which the applicant was unaware prior to the Planning Commission hearing?
Yes.
I just want to make the point that this is not the applicant going to Planning Commission with one proposal, getting a recommendation, then trying to change the parameters, and come to City Council and skip a step, because that other issue had not been raised prior to the discussion in Planning Commission. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. Can I ask somebody else a question?
Yep.
Chief Sloggy? Can I ask you a question? I don't expect you to have any hard data, but just from your experience, has there been any notice of increase in police response to calls in this particular area?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Mr. Nestor, will you take us through Planning Commission's logic in the one person per one-bedroom and two persons per two-bedroom?
Well, I never try to represent Planning Commission's logic, the same as I never try to represent City Council's logic. You know, I think they felt since the original approval was for 143 people, that continuing to impose a limit below the maximum of what was permitted by the ordinance was appropriate. They seem, I think in the discussion, they felt that the 322 maximum that's allowed by the ordinance was too much, and they felt that 164 was reasonable. They did not, you know, there was not an alternate proposal made by the applicant at that time for 256, so they did not discuss that idea. But I think, I think the commission obviously felt that 164 was a reasonable restriction, and, you know, there wasn't really an objection made to that at the time.
Thanks.
Doug?
The modified 14-22B, allowing calls for up to 256 residents, there's no indication that that's the target for them. That's just taking into consideration that some two-bedroom apartments may have a couple, married couple in there, and so that allows for that type of usage.
I mean, and the applicant will probably want to speak with us when the public hearing is open, but I think that they were looking for additional flexibility over and above what Planning Commission's recommendation would allow, and the flexibility to... what Planning Commission's recommendation would allow, and the flexibility to, say, allow a married couple to live in a one-bedroom apartment, or to have three or four people sharing a two-bedroom apartment.
And just to follow up on, yes, the police chief, I would assume there's no fire safety issues with any of this changes?
No, that's been inspected. They added more smoke detectors. Whether it be approved at the Planning Commission recommended limit or at the limit requested by the applicant, we still need our codes.
And I think you addressed it, but if we did the modified, there's still, there would be ample parking.
The parking is based on the number of, the number and type of apartments, not the number of people in each apartment, just from observation of driving and riding by there a lot. There's still a substantial amount of parking available. Thank you.
Yeah, Judy?
Just to expand on what Doug said, we're not saying that you have to have two people in a one-bedroom and you have to have four people. I mean, that's up to the market, I'm assuming.
Correct.
We're just giving them the outer limits, what they can do.
Yes, and it's not based on a per-apartment basis. It's based on the total of people in the building.
And I guess a question for the applicant is, are they going to charge by the row or by the person? That's, I'll ask the other guy. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah. I think this has been answered, both Doug and Judy's questions, but it seems to me what the applicant's doing is saying that you have one-bedroom apartments that really have a bedroom and a study, and there may be situations, you brought up the married couple, but there may be two students who decide, for economic reasons, to share a one-bedroom apartment. That certainly would be allowable anywhere else. And so, it seems to me that they're asking to create flexibility for how people want to use those, rather than saying you can only have one person in a one-bedroom and only two people in a two-bedroom. But you, by creating an upper limit, and I don't know that 256 is the right upper limit or not, but it seems to me by creating an upper limit, you're then allowing people to make decisions, how best to use that space. Is that, am I interpreting that correctly?
Essentially, it allows additional flexibility. Now, the one-bedroom apartments that you see here, there is just a living area, dining area, and a bedroom. There's no study on the remaining one-bedroom.
Okay. Okay, that's helpful. Any other questions before I open the public hearing? If not, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to speak to this to come forward. I do have one speaker's card, and that's Raymond Suttle Jr. Come forward, state your name and address.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Raymond Suttle Jr. I'm an attorney with Jones, Bledken, Wilson, Kelly. Our office address is 701 Town Center Drive in Newport News. With me today is one of the principal owners, Mr. Florakis, and will be happy to answer any questions after my presentation. I'd first like to thank Mr. Nestor and his staff. He's been very helpful going through this process. I think everyone knows the history of the project, the fact that it's been a good reuse of a hotel space, and thought what I might do is get into sort of the issue that's been discussed about what having maybe a Planning Commission. There was no restriction that we had, or we'd asked for, in the application originally. I believe after the public hearing was closed, some members of the commission had some concerns about the numbers, and they placed a restriction, basically per-bedroom restriction. And they voted for it. And then, when we went back and reflected on it, we thought, well, we have two problems. One, the restriction is based on a bedroom, and we've had instances where we've had some graduate students that are married. I thought school was not tough enough without having to be married while you're going to it, but some people are married when they go to school. And then, the other issue we had, a specific example, was we had a professor that rented, and he was married. So, we thought the restriction, if there was going to be a restriction, shouldn't be per-bedroom, but per-building. That's really our first concern. Our second concern is we've had, the market really demands, and these are younger kids, it's not unusual for these students to room together in one bedroom, and we needed to create that flexibility. You still have the limitation of two unrelated people in one bedroom. So, it's not that the 256, you're going to have 10 people in one apartment, because that overriding number of no more than two unrelated in a bedroom still will hold under the local ordinance. So, we, what we have found is that we really need a little bit more flexibility than the 164 when we started looking at it. We don't have a problem with reducing the number from what the ordinance would allow. Again, we've asked, and it's, that these, some of these studies be converted, so obviously the number's going to be higher than what was originally granted back in 2006, I believe. So, but we think that based on the prior use of the building as a hotel, when there were many more people at one time in the building, that the building can certainly accommodate that. The safety measures of security and smoke detectors and what have you certainly allow for that as well. So, we thought that 256 number was probably a good number to go with, gives us flexibility on renting, gives flexibility on how the students may rent these apartments. These apartments are rented per-apartment, not per-individual, okay? So, and obviously, when you're going to school and economics, it's not unusual having one maid. So, that's really, that was really our thinking and why we think we need it. The other thing I would say is, by putting, if you put that limit of 164 on us, it really puts these owners, who've gone to the trouble of renovating this property, at a competitive disadvantage with other apartment complexes, who might have a two-bedroom apartment, and they have four people in there, under the zoning, up to the max. So, we're not asking for the max, but we think we're asking for a reasonable number that gives us that flexibility. We've done the layout, as Mr. Nestor said. We're prepared to make those improvements, additional parking spaces. So, that's under, we have a proposal for that. So, I'm more than happy to answer any other questions you may have, but that's sort of the background and the history of how that restriction came on. That was something that we were not aware of at planning. We certainly understood their concerns, and we're trying to address those concerns by imposing the restriction of that 256 number.
Okay. If you'd stay there, Mr. Suttle, because I believe there may be some questions for you. And then, I will continue with the public hearing. Does anybody have any particular questions? I have one question. How did you arrive at the 256 number?
I believe my letter, which is part of the package, I think is, I think we sort of came up with that calculation by an average of three people in a two-bedroom apartment and two in a one-bedroom.
Okay. Yeah.
And that was sort of the calculation.
Yeah. I just, I remember that being addressed. I just wanted to make sure that it's out there. Okay. Thank you very much. We really appreciate you.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Anybody else wish to speak to this matter? If so, please come forward. If not, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action. Brian?
Well, let's go first. Yeah. Well, let's go back down memory lane again, just like we did with the last one. You know, when this project was first brought before us, my recollection is there was pretty good support for it for a couple of reasons, maybe more than a couple. Some of the primary reasons were the pressure that was being placed on single-family residential neighborhoods, particularly those closest to campus, by the lack of a variety of housing options for students on campus. And this project not only seemed to address both of those at the same time, it provided a very attractive product. It provided a different product that was currently generally available in the market. It took the residents out of the, whoever would choose to live here would be in, still in pretty good proximity to campus, but in an area where they weren't surrounded by single-family residential homes, and yet would get a lot of the services that residents of a property like this might desire. In addition to that, it took a really poorly situated hotel property, because it had no road frontage and almost no visibility, no primary road frontage, that was in terrible condition. And the new owners invested a significant amount of money to drastically improve the quality of the structure and certainly the fit and finish of the interior. And I'm pretty sure we've all been through it, and we, before and after, and it's a stark contrast to what it was and what it is now. But we'd never had this product in the city before. We'd not really had any privately operated, student-oriented housing on this scale. So, I don't know that we knew what to expect. So, some of the guidelines that were put in place, we're trying to feel out what is the right balance of providing an opportunity for the new owners going to invest a significant amount of money, to have a good business plan, and also not to overly concentrate too many people in one particular area. Well, in the time that it's operated since, and we just heard the chief say, there's not been any indication that there's any increase in the need for police response to this area. So, they've done a good job of managing what they have. So, now they've come back and asked for an opportunity to reconfigure some of the product as they've understood the market a little bit better, they see what the needs are, you determine unintended consequences of what you originally offered, and you're adjusting to what the market needs. So, that seems to be a good thing. The other idea of providing a little more capacity here, if you think about this as a hotel, and I think that was a fair point, a hotel like this is not designed to have one person in it. I mean, sure, one person would be very comfortable in a room like that, but I would guarantee you, the average occupancy of a room in a hotel like this is far more than one in season. So, the concentration of activity from people on-site, to me, doesn't seem any greater. I wish I understood a little bit better what the Planning Commission had fully intended by placing the cap on the number of people per room, as they did. We, you know, we've even been more flexible in the single-family residential limits per unit, because we felt that it wasn't always about the number of people in a property, although certainly, the more people you concentrate in one place, the more opportunity there is for someone to think they're anonymous and maybe get a little frisky. But the, it was all about really the behavior of the people. And if the ownership group has demonstrated that they can manage this well enough, I think they deserve a little more opportunity to have some flexibility. I don't know if 256 is, or, yes, 256, I don't know if that's the right number. It seems fairly reasonable to me. I'd like to hear what my colleagues say.
Scott? At the risk of repeating what Paul's already said, I don't completely understand Planning Commission's logic in the, especially the one person per one-bedroom, but based on the experience that everyone in this room knows Williamsburg has had with students in neighborhoods and elsewhere, this is the very type of place that we ought to be encouraging them to live. And two persons, two people to a bedroom, two people to a one-bedroom apartment makes it significantly more financially viable. I don't think it's any of our business, whether they're married or not. Two people are free to live there together, whatever status they choose. So, I'm comfortable with the 250 number. That makes sense. It's still not complete capacity if you were at two per one-bedroom and four per two-bedroom. I think that's a fair balance, you know? Again, I, you know, this is, epitomizes the very type of project we want to facilitate, and it was, came online at the right time. So, I think we ought to allow them extra flexibility.
Thanks.
No, I do support the modified ordinance allowing for the 256 people. Clearly, the owners of this have demonstrated careful management. They've done a good job. They've made a significant investment. Security is arguably better than it was when it was just an end, and I think the market will dictate how many people can stay there comfortably. So, I'm supportive.
I agree. I think we need to give the owner the flexibility he needs.
Yeah, and I agree as well, and I think you have to keep in mind, I think it's pointed out, the 256 is really a max, and there's no, you know, you may reach that, but my guess is, I think you're not going to reach that, because some people are going to want one person in a one-bedroom apartment, some people might want a two-bedroom apartment to themselves. I mean, but it seems to me from a regulatory philosophy approach that rather than getting detailed in specifying one person in a one-bedroom and two in a two-bedroom, that you're better off specifying a limit and then allowing sort of the market to determine what happens under that limit, with the idea that you may reach the limit, but my guess is, that's probably not going to happen. And even if it does, it's not going to put too much stress on this building or this neighborhood or anything else. So, it seems to me this is a good approach to the issue, and I agree with many of the other points that have been made as well. So, with that, all...
Well, can I just say one more thing?
Yep.
Since this property has opened, and since the college has invested some more money in off-and-on-campus housing, and with the addition of Mr. Florakis's project on City Green, and we have a few others in the area, I think it's fairly safe to say, now, is that, I don't know if this is a result of these specific actions, but since those times when these properties have opened, the general relationship between the longer-term residents of the city and the students who are living in the community have been far better than they were in the many years before that. So, this has really met, this and several other efforts, and I want to give the college some credit here, because they often take a lot of criticism for what they've done on the student housing front, but I think it's an area where they've really tried to step up. And surely, we have some concerns about the properties going off the tax rolls, but One Tribe Place has contributed too. So, I think everybody's working here towards an end that helps the entire community. It's not just about a developer, it's not just about the residents in the single-family neighborhoods. It's also about the students and trying to give them options, and I just think this is the right way to go.
Parking ever becomes a problem. There's a very nice parking garage near this property.
Okay. Any other comments, questions? If not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the approval of proposed ordinance 14-22B.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
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 Aye. And thank you all again for being here. Thank you for your presentation, and good luck. We're interested and continuing to work with you. Our next public hearing are housekeeping amendments. We have two. Chris, may we do these together, or do we need to do them separately?
As long as your motion includes the both specifically.
Okay. So, the motion has to include both.
You can use one public hearing.
Okay. Since these are housekeeping, I think we'll do one public hearing. The first is PCR 14-18, amend zoning ordinance definition for group homes, and that's proposed ordinance 14-23. And the second is PCR 14-019, amended requirements for primary subdivision plats, and that's proposed ordinance 14-24. Mr. Nestor?
These are two easy cases. We have no choice. The General Assembly has changed the state code, so we have to bring our ordinance into compliance. The first case, 018, deals with the definition for group homes. The General Assembly amended the code to more precisely define what constitutes a group home. It removed the requirement that group homes occupied by individuals suffering from mental illness, intellectual disability, or developmental disability also be occupied by one or more resident counselors or other staff persons, so as to now only require non-resident staff persons. The second case deals with when we can require a preliminary plat for subdivisions. Our ordinance now requires... Our ordinance now requires it for 25 or more lots. We can only require it for 50 or more lots, even though it's served us well with the 25 lot limit. So this proposed ordinance changes that and notes that it is optional for fewer than 50 lots. So those are the two housekeeping changes that we are required to make.
Thank you, Reed. Before I open the public hearing, any questions for Mr. Nestor? Again, we don't have much choice here. With that, I'll open the public hearing and ask anyone who wishes to address this issue to come forward. Seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing and come back to council for discussion and action.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move the council-approved ordinance is 14-23 and 14-24.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Ms. Scott, would you call the roll, please?
Aye.
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 Thank you. Thank you, Reed. Thank you both, Reed and Carolyn, for your work today. And again, I think as several, the applicants have expressed, our planning department does a terrific job of working with applicants, and we really appreciate all the effort you've put into it. It pays off for the city and makes our job easier, so thank you very much. Next order of business is reports, the first, the monthly financial statements. Jack, anything in particular?
Yes, sir. One thing I'd like to point out is that for the August report, if you look on page five, where we have the room, meal, and sales tax numbers, what was sent to you last week showed for August, in room tax, a 13 percent less sales in August, this August compared to last August. The finance directors, we had a couple of late submittals come in, that if you put those into the numbers, that 13 percent drop drops to a 4.9 percent less than last year. It's still not good news, but it's not as bad news. The good thing about getting your monthly statements very properly as soon as the month closes out is that you get them very promptly. The bad thing is that we always need to go back and make some corrections when there's some things come in that need to be accrued back into that month. So this is just an example of that. So I wanted you to see that. That's all I had.
Can I just ask a clarification on that? You said it was for August, but the report was for August, but the results are for July?
That's correct. It's actually July activity reported in August.
In August, okay.
Do you have that true number of room sales?
Yes, sir. It's 300...
That would be the tax. How about the sale amount?
I don't have that in front of me. Bill, do you have that?
Will this report be updated?
It always is updated with each month, so typically, we'll go ahead and update it next month, and then it'll correct the figures for the prior month. We could do an interim report and set it back out, but it's on.
Why don't we do an interim report, update it, because it's...
Important.
Yeah.
Important numbers.
Right now.
Okay.
Any other questions on the financial reports, monthly department operating reports, anything in particular?
Just one thing I'd like to point out. In your finance report, one of the indicators I think is particularly good to look at is the value of assessments compared to the actual sales in any given month. And for instance, so far this year, we've had 27 residential sales. When we look at what the value in those sales, compare that to the assessed value of the properties, they were at 92.9 percent of assessed value. A year ago, we also, at this time, looking at the same statistic, it was 95.9 percent. That's actually a good indicator. That suggests that properties are selling at a value higher than their assessments by approximately 7 percent, or at least over those 27 properties. And so if that holds true for the whole market, that's a big if. But to the extent it does, then that's an indication that assessments will catch up to those sales values, and that's a good indicator of looking ahead in future budget years as to what we'll be able to budget for real estate tax.
Any questions on operating budgets?
Just one comment on that number. Because we have a comparatively small sample size in the city, we don't have a huge number of homes, and that's a fairly small number of transactions, it is possible for a few transactions to skew the trend. So what this means, though, is that in at least some segments of the housing market, assessments are likely to increase next go-around, but it may not necessarily be in every segment.
That's correct. And again, as the year goes on, as we get more information...
Better understanding.
Is that overfind that number?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanted to, if you look at the monthly operating report and you see how busy Public Works is, and I just wanted to say something. Mr. Clayton did a wonderful thing for our neighborhood. We had a problem, a homeowner at the corner, Goodwin and Burns, had a problem with people running over his lawn when they turned the corner. And he called or emailed, and Mr. Clayton was out there the next day, and they came up with a solution, and they fixed it in about two days. And I just think that's remarkable, given how busy the department is, how many other things are going on, but to respond that quickly, and the homeowner is delighted, of course. So, thank you.
Anything else on operating reports? If not, city manager reports. We have two. First is legislative issues.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of City Council. Before you today are a list of potential legislative issues for the city's 2015 General Assembly legislative agenda. This is the time of year where council provides staff guidance on the type of topics and items you would like to see in the city's legislative agenda. Before our October meeting, staff will contact our regional partners regarding potential legislative issues of mutual interest, and so you may see, when this comes back before you in October, additional topics. But we thought this was a good place to get the conversation started with council, and for council to provide some guidance to us on things you'd like to see, say on there, or new ideas or new issues that need to be reviewed and looked at for the first draft of your legislative agenda for this fall. So what you'll see here is we've divided it into essentially four categories. Some of the issues you've seen in the past are ongoing issues. Statewide priorities, looking at redistricting reforms, is an issue that council dealt with last month with the resolution that was approved. Tourism promotion funding for BTC has been one that's been on our agenda for a number of years. Under transportation priorities, the widening of I-64 from Williamsburg to Richmond, focused with that. VDOT urban system allocation, also passenger rail, increasing the number of trains per day, but also the efficiencies of those trains and getting from Williamsburg to DC, Williamsburg, Richmond, then to DC. Looking at Virginia's sales tax policy, online retail sales tax collection, lodging tax on internet sales, not a whole lot of movement at the state level or federal level on those issues. Revenue neutral reform for BEPole taxes is another issue that's been on our agenda before. Also, state funding for the share of local programs, everything from K-12 public education to Police 599 programs, regional jails, human services programs, behavioral health programs, and constitutional officers. So Mr. Tull and I put this list together of issues that we know that are still out there, that need some additional work and are of particular interest to the city. VML has also just recently released their draft statements and priorities, and so between now and the October meeting, I'll be reviewing those items to see if there's anything in addition we would like to add potentially to our agenda. So I'm happy to answer any questions. More importantly, I'm happy to take down notes of any guidance council would like to provide to me as far as drafting the draft for October.
Jody, thank you very much. Any suggestions, comments?
Well, I just, there was something on the news last night about UVA having to look for cuts, because the state has cut their funding, and I'm wondering if we should say something about William &amp; Mary, because, or funding for statewide higher education.
Yeah, we've done that in the past. We might, yeah.
I have, you know, the opinion that we ought to win this down some, to things that are really vital, because, you know, it's an important meeting that we have when our legislators come. But so many times, we go through this list, and it's like, eh, good luck, good luck, good luck. And I almost feel like we should come up with a list where we say, don't give up any ground, don't make it, no deep cut, you know, don't cut us any more ways than you already are, but then also pick two or three things that we actually really go after. Because I think if we're, if we really, really punch it, say, on BTC tourism funding, that may be a stronger voice than spreading that all the way around. Just a suggestion.
Yeah, I mean, that might be a way to think about, I mean, what we've done in the past is organized it in terms of these types of categories, but I wonder whether we shouldn't say, these are issues that, you know, these are continuing issues, you know, a lot of those issues said have been on a legislative agenda for, these are continuing issues that we, you know, want you to pay attention to and are important to us, but then here are a couple of issues that we want to, you know, particularly emphasize.
And maybe we have the master list going into the meeting with the legislators, and then we come up with the ones that we really would like to push for that actually have a chance of going somewhere, because...
Maybe staff could play around with some different ways of presenting that, as well as, I think, in the meeting, we can always really focus the meeting on the one or two or three things that we think are...
We can work on that.
Crucial. Is that some reasonable?
Yeah.
Anything else? Jody, does that...
That gives me some great guidance. As I mentioned, I will be in contact with our regional partners, like William &amp; Mary, between now and the October meeting, to find out if there are any specific issues they would like the council to consider, including on its agenda. And we will bring you back a draft for discussion at your October meeting.
So James City and York County's...
Yeah, we include not only William &amp; Mary, but also the public schools, James City County, York County, Colonial Williamsburg, or sort of our Chamber Tourism Alliance, or some of our big partner organizations that we reach out to specifically.
Okay, super. Thanks.
Just one thing to add. I think sometimes it's important to keep a lot of irons in the fire, because all of a sudden, one of them will start to glow, and you can push it, but you never know...
Where the heat's gonna...
I was going to suggest we consider one more item, given Mr. Foster's sage advice here. I'm going to hold off on that for now, but I want to give it some more thought, and I may get with Ms. Miller in the meantime and just talk through something, and so something else may come up.
Yeah, one of the issues we talked about, I think Ms. Miller is going to get some information, but how do we support the counties in some of the issues that they want, and can we incorporate those into ours? You know, the whole Dillon Rule complexity allows, you know, taxation rights with us, but not with the county, and how do we help the county with some of those issues, and perhaps we can integrate those into our legislative agenda?
Anything else? Okay, Jody, thanks. We're looking forward to seeing what you come back with. Next, our building inspection permit fees.
So I'll begin on that, and then Matt Westheimer will pick it up. This issue is something we discussed at the time of the adoption of the budget, that we would need to revisit the issue of building permit fees early during this fiscal year. The budget anticipated initially a half of a position, additional position. We currently have four people in the codes compliance department. Mr. Westheimer, of course, leads the division. We have two other combination inspectors, and then office staff. That's down from seven people that we had in FY '09. We drew down the number of staffing when the recession hit, and simply the demand was less, and we may, we may have drawn it down too far even then. Now, what we're looking at is adding back, going from four positions to five positions, another inspector position. It's apparent that initially, I had hoped that we might be able to do that with a part-time inspector rather than going all to full-time. And we advertised for that, and just could not find someone with the qualifications to do the job on a part-time basis, so we're going to need to go full-time, and there's plenty of work there to be done. I would add with it that in the memo, we reminded council of all the different codes and programs that the department enforces. It's not only normally what we think of as building inspection for a new construction, but also the Virginia's Maintenance Code and our Neighborhood Improvement Program, the city's rental inspection program, erosion and sedimentation control, and now we have a new one, and that is the stormwater management, which used to be done by the state, the Department of Environmental Quality, has devolved back to locality, so that falls on local government now, and it goes to the division. So when you add it all up, that's why we're adding another position to go to five employees in the department to maintain, to keep, to maintain the workload. So with that as background, we're looking at our fee structure with the goal of seeing if our fees can cover as much of that cost as possible. We don't expect it to cover it all. So I'm going to ask Mr. Westheimer now if he'll go through the fee options and recommendations, and also give you some idea of where we stand vis-à-vis other localities and the percentage of our operating costs that we hope to recover. Matt?
Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, during the recent evaluation of the city's building permit fee schedule, particularly close attention was paid to a select few categories. The administrative and annual elevator renewal fee, the minimum permit fee, commercial building permit fees, and multifamily building permit fees that consist of three or more dwellings. The last major changes to this fee schedule occurred in 2006. Making the proposed moderate changes to the building permit fee schedule allow greater cost recovery to operate the codes compliance division. The intent is to have the development community and property owners who require specific services offered by the division move towards covering more of the cost of operation, thus requiring less reliance on the general fund money to operate. The proposed fee increases affected the following fee schedule areas. Updating this fee from $50 to $75, the minimum fee, the last increase in this category occurred in 2005. This fee covers all permits that were, when calculated, given formulas in the fee schedule for specific permits do not reach a set minimum. In most cases, some type of plan review along with a varying number of inspections still occur. In fiscal year 2014, 156 permits were issued under this fee. Based on this increase, it would provide an additional $3,900 in funding. The administrative fee, updating this fee from $40 to $55. This last increase in this fee occurred in 2006. This fee is in place to cover the administrative time that it takes to intake all permit applications, input all data into the permitting software, and perform all necessary research to verify that applicants have the ability to perform work in the state of Virginia and in the city of Williamsburg. 1,064 permits were charged the admin fee in fiscal year 2014. Based on this increase, this would provide an additional $15,960 in funding. The elevator renewal fee, updating this fee from $50 to $75. This fee was last increased in 2006. Annual elevator compliance certificates are required to be issued to all active elevators and lifts throughout the state of Virginia. The city currently has 132 elevators that are listed and issued annual compliance certificates. The certificates are issued based on third-party inspections. Staff is required to track all elevators and lifts to initiate compliance certificates that are current and up-to-date. Once the required inspections are completed, staff generates and inputs all data into certificates that are mailed out and required to be affixed to the device. Based on 2014, the data, the increase would provide an additional $3,300 in funding. Amusement device fees, with the adoption of the 2012 USBC in July, minor changes occurred to this section. The USBC regulates fees that are charged as they relate to amusement devices and associated equipment. Small monetary increases have occurred to all categories, along with the deletion of the kiddie ride category and the addition of the small mechanical ride or inflatable Commercial and multifamily building permits. There have been many changes in construction and engineering practice over the past few years that have made inspecting commercial and multifamily projects much more challenging. The inspection process requires... The inspection process requires a much greater attention to detail and requires inspections at a much higher frequency due to innovative processes of assembling key structural components. Attention to detail is imperative when conducting inspections of this magnitude. The overall goal of the codes compliance division as it relates to new construction is to ensure that buildings are safe for all occupants by having all structural and nonstructural elements constructed properly and all required life safety components in place and functioning correctly. Two options have been assessed for this, for this particular category. Option one retains the cost per square foot approach the city currently has and increases it from 17 cents to 20 cents per square foot. Option two, this, this use, this uses the valuation of construction and bases the permit fee accordingly. All of the metro Richmond and most areas surrounding Richmond have moved to this approach. Newport News and the city of Norfolk both use similar fee structures for commercial building permits. Option two proposes a $4 per thousand or 0.4% cost of construction fee. This option provides the most cost recovery for actual services provided by the codes This exhibit shows a cost comparison of building permit fees in Williamsburg, Hampton Roads, and the Richmond area. The city of Williamsburg is notated by three blue marks. The first blue mark is the actual current fees that this fee schedule supports. The second bar represents the first option, the option of moving from 17 cents to 20 cents per square foot and the actual building permit is based on a 5,000 square foot commercial building. The third option, or the second option, the third bar represents the second option, a 0.4% or $4 per thousand, cost of construction at $300,000 with a permit fee based off of that. So you can see there's a slight increase in the commercial building permits for the fee for this, for the structures. This exhibit shows expenditures to fees based on fiscal year 2014 actual data and 2015 adoption, adopted budget with an increase of a property maintenance inspector. The light green bar represents the actual fees collected in fiscal year 2014. The darker green bar represents those same fees under the option one scenario and the blue bar represents the same fees using the option two scenario. Just a different way of showing, showing the same thing. This third exhibit is pie charts that compare expenditures to fees collected. The light green is actual fees collected and the blue would be general fund money that is taken to, to finish funding the, the division. The first pie chart represents last year, same budget, no, no, no increase in inspectors or staffing, no increase in fees. We were a 60-40 return. The second pie chart is with the increase of a property maintenance inspector with no increase in fees. That drops us to a 51% fee-based and 49% based on the general fund. The third shows the administrative fee increase along with the elevator renewal fee and it, it goes up to a 57% fee supported at 43% general fund. The last, the, the second one to the last is the option one proposal with the 20 cents per square foot. That brings us up to a, back to a 63% and a 37% general fund. And the last one actually shows the, the highest cost recovery on option two scenario at a cost, $4, actually, this, this actually shows $5 per thousand, but our proposal is for a $4 per thousand contract value. And you can see the significant gain that is experienced throughout those, those two options. Be happy to answer any questions you might have, staff recommendations to adopt the city of Williamsburg building permit fee with option two.
Matt, thank you. Clearly, a lot of effort went into this and we really do appreciate the clarity of the, of the data you've provided us as well. Turn to the council.
You keep coming back to it. It's a little bit of a tough call. I mean, new development should, should pay for itself. To not have that in place puts a burden on other revenue streams, including the money that we receive from individual resident taxpayers and other already contributing businesses to the economy. The challenge is, though, at the same time, we still want to encourage, motivate, stimulate new development where appropriate and redevelopment. So it, it becomes a balancing act. So I struggle with this on both ends. The thing that, maybe the factor that gives me a little more comfort if we adopt this is that we've seen a chart where we compare with other jurisdictions on fee structure for permit fees. But that doesn't take into account what's the, first of all, the differences look big as a percentage, but the dollars that we're talking about are fairly small per individual project. And how do those compare to the advantage of ongoing costs that are far lower in the city of Williamsburg than they are in surrounding jurisdictions, such as the tax rate, property tax rate, such as the water rate? And so it's, it's slightly increasing the entrance fee or initiation fee, but the overall annual dues are still far lower to do business in the city. So my inclination is to support this, but I'd love to hear the thoughts of mine colleagues.
Thanks.
I was kind of torn on this as well, for the same reasons Paul reiterated. But the money per project in most situations is probably not going to be a deal breaker. But I, I don't exactly buy the argument that, yes, you may pay a higher cost per project here, but you pay lower property taxes because so often, a person who designs, builds, and constructs a project is not the long-term owner. That's a private developer who ultimately sells the project. So that, that cost is built in and ultimately is, is handed down to the, you know, the ultimate purchaser. Also, I understand from a revenue generation perspective why you would want the graduate, the rate based on $5 per thousand dollars of construction cost. But it seems a bit counterintuitive that a higher finished building, which is gonna cost more, you're charging them more whereas a lower-cost building at a lower finish would ultimately seem to me to require more inspection and more time. So you tend to, I would assume, get better performance out of someone who's gonna be working on a higher finished building. So if we do anything, I'm a little more comfortable with the 20 cents per square foot. And the other thing here is, we're talking about not, I mean, it's a lot of money and a, and a small budget like our city has. But if you look at this sheet, just from July 2012 to July fiscal year 2015, that's a $94,000 difference. And we're, we're looking to change, you know, $20 on each fee structure here, you know, kinda goes to show this, this, where we are today. And, you know, we're going through a lot of effort to chase some, some small dollars to make ends meet when the big dollars are flying out the door. We could talk a whole lot about that.
Well, I think your, your point about the dollar per thousand is, is right on. I think it disincentivizes, disincentivizes quality. And one of the things that, that we try to achieve here in, in Williamsburg is, is a high-quality product, not because we're snooty, but because we want it to stand the test of time. We want products to last. And I think, you know, we've got lots of examples of that and I think we've got, there's some concerns about some other examples. And, you know, just, maybe I got it wrong, but at a four-bedroom, a four-unit housing complex at 2,000 square feet, and based on, you know, let's just say, $100, $150 a foot, the fee would be $4,800. If you did it at .2 per square foot, it's $1,600. That's, that's a significant difference. And maybe my numbers are wrong, we could check them. So I think that the price per thousand is too much of an increase on, on a project of that nature. And I think when we look at the downtown area where we'd like to, to see some of those, you know, multifamily units come in, maybe at a smaller square footage to fit in, to provide some of the density and vibrancy, this would be a disincentive. And so I think just incentivizing quality is much more important. So I think the square footage rate makes more sense. You know, fees and taxes in general, I think, are disincentives in general. But at the same time, there's a cost to, you know, the business of government. You know, it, we're still, it's not a profit generator for us, but, you know, there's still an expense to it and I think we need to meet that. And I think the city managers, you know, merited at the beginning, talking about the pressure that the department's under and the need to, to hire somebody new, you know, it's not escaped with me. I mean, I, you know, I see that. You drive down Riverside and you see all that construction down there. There's a lot of, you know, a lot of activity, you know, city involvement down there that takes time. So I'm okay with, you know, some of the minimum fees, but I think for the, for the purpose of the, the dollar versus the, the percentage, or not a percentage, but the 20 cents per square foot, I think that, that would be the way to approach it.
Well, I'm, I am willing to go along with option two because I think that's, that's the best thing for the city. I, I kind of disagree about worrying about out-of-town developers. That's, that's not something I'm real happy about encouraging. I'd rather have people who live here.
Sure.
Like Mr. Floracus and of City Lofts, for example. Those are, those are the kinds of projects that I think I would like to see. But I, and I agree with Mr. Pons about quality and I think it's people who live here who understand the quality argument, so. So Matt, maybe Matt and Jack, you can help me on this. I, I think sticking with the, you know, price per square foot makes sense to me in a way that's sort of attaching it to the dollar value of the project, does it? But what's the rationale for going to a, I mean, is, is there a rationale for going to, there is for going to, the, the attaching the, the rate to the value of the project rather than the size of the project? What exactly is that rationale? Because it, it, as it's been expressed here, it seems to me to be penalizing quality. And does it do that or not?
Well, we know we want to assign the fees to the magnitude of the project.
Right.
And there is such a range in, in per square foot costs that the, the value of a project at the same square foot, you could, you could be with a much higher value, you could be paying a much less percentage of your overall project costs. The complexity of the more, the more complex and higher-value project also demands more inspection than the less, than the simpler project with just less, less components to it. So I, I think there's, there's a good argument that can be made to move away from what is the old standard of the cost per square foot and move toward the other. I would say probably the best reason not to do it is simply, it hasn't come to our part of the peninsula yet, but we see it in the urban areas. We see it in Richmond, we see it on the south side. And I think it is the wave of the future and I don't believe it, it is a disincentive to quality because the percentage still of your overall project that's going into the, the building fee is, is very small. So I would argue it's the better way to go, but I can't argue it conclusively.
Yeah, I, I think, I mean, what, what, as I approached this, it seemed to me, one, one is, these fees have been in place for a long time, 2005, 2006 for many of them. And, and the cost of our doing business and everybody else doing business hasn't stayed the same. It, it seems to me that, that, you know, as Paul suggested, I mean, we are, we are moving more and more toward a fee-for-service type approach to local government and it's not just us. I think that's, that's just the reality of, of the new economy. So I think, you know, we, we need to be thinking that way as we look at these fees. And I, while I understand the wave of the future, I'm not sure I'm ready to get marched over by it quite yet. So I think I'm comfortable sticking with the per square foot until, till we really begin to see, you know, what's, what's happening with those and, and get some real evidence of, is this a better way to go or not? I'm not, I'm not convinced of that at this point. And so I, I, I like the work that you guys have done and appreciate it. I think the, the, the other fees seem to me to be fine and in line with sort of what, what we need to do and begin to get us closer to, to covering the cost of some of these. But I, I would prefer to stay with the, the cost per square foot rather than go to the other.
I have a question. Is anybody exempt from these fees? Does this apply to any building permit this issue?
Churches, religious, religious organizations.
Okay.
And rest, and single-family residential would, these are the commercial-
Just commercial residential.
So single-family residential, what's the basis for that?
Non-centre-square foot.
So it's a square foot cost. So would apply in those cases.
So unless we keep that, you know, we keep those two in line with each other?
The point, the point was made to me earlier today, oftentimes, when a building is built for a nonprofit, it's done on a nonprofit basis for the construction team and the architects. So they end up eating the cost of the building permit. So I wonder if they're, you know, nonprofit is a big word in this, especially in the city of Williamsburg. I wonder if there's some way we could make some allowance there.
Yeah, I guess we might want to ask the city attorney to look into what the general assembly let us do. And secondly, is that something we, since religious organizations are examples, is that something we could look at for nonprofits and give it, given a particular definition? With, is that, Scott, is that something you would like?
Yeah. The question is whether that is a statewide standard or not. We need to-
We need to. Okay, thanks.
Just wanted to comment, Mr. Pons' comments helped me appreciate something that I didn't mention earlier, and that is the importance of having the proper number of staff available to do the necessary inspections. Because if we don't have the right number of people there, one, the people who are working get overworked and I'm sure they're all gonna do the absolute best job they can do, but the more pressure you put on people, more likelihood, something can get missed. But secondly, as it relates to the, the cost structure we're talking about here, it could be a lot more expensive to a construction project to have to wait for inspections on a regular basis and a lot more frustrating to do business or to build a building in the city if you have to continually wait for people to get to your site than it is to pay a little bit more to get the service when you need it. I just, I think there's some value to that. Which, which leads me to support this and I'm, I'm fine with the per square foot.
I have had builders tell me that they prefer to build in the city because you don't have to wait and you do other places. We need to make sure that can be used. Any other comments? Matt, again, thank you very much. I'll, I'll take a motion, I think. I think we're talking, I think, I think the consensus I'm getting is option one. Is that-
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council adopt the changes as shown and attached option one, Williamsburg Building Permit Fees Scheduled Effective October 1st, 2014.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Aye.
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 Again, Matt, thank you very much for all the work that went into this. It really, really helped us understand sort of the issues out there. It's a good, good job. Next order of business is city attorney reports. This is proposed ordinance 14 dash 25, clarification of service dog, dog's eligibility for tax exemption. Chris?
The city of Williamsburg requires dogs to be licensed and charges a tax for that license. Per state law, the city has an exemption for service dogs and that is defined by the general assembly. The current definition of service dog is the one that was formerly in the code of Virginia. The general assembly has changed that definition and so the ordinance in front of you changes the city code to match the definition in the state code and the staff recommendation is that council adopt the proposed ordinance number 1425.
Thanks, Chris. And any questions? Not, I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that city council adopt proposed ordinance 14 dash 25.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Would you call the roll, please, Ms. Scott?
Aye.
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 Next order of business, unfinished business. We have none, is that correct?
Correct.
And then next is new business and I think we have one thing, Michelle, you have- You have.
Certainly. As you recall, Mr. Mayor and members of council, the EDA has been investigating what are possible roles for the city and the EDA to encourage a redevelopment project on the property where the Williamsburg Shopping Center is located. And so the EDA had appointed, had discussed this in its August meeting, and then appointed a subcommittee to work on, on an outline and came back to the EDA yet, just yesterday, with that outline. So the EDA has asked me to share that with city council, and will do so electronically in a printed form. And just to let you know, what's in here is, is the EDA's thinking is, is they'd like to see redevelopment on the property versus just a continuation of, of use of the property as the way it is. They see the potential for some redevelopment there. And so they've looked through, what are some tools in the toolbox that a city or an EDA could use to do that? And they've outlined those in this document. And you, you've not seen it yet, so I know you need time to do that. And some of it involves asking for some planning items. Others are traditional incentives that would be used. So they've asked me to forward that to you. Happy to answer any questions at this time, but I imagine it's, it's a later discussion.
Yeah. I think since, since we really haven't had time to, to look at it and digest it, I, I hope you will, and Paul is our representative, our liaison to EDA. I hope you'll convey to them our appreciation for the, the effort they're putting into this and the ideas that are coming forward. But we do need some time to look at it, reflect on it, get staff input from it, and, and then begin to move forward. But again, I'm really pleased with the, the EDA and their, their both enthusiasm and ideas that seem to be coming out, out of this. So we look forward to working with them in the future. So I hope you'll convey that to, to them and tell them we'll be back in touch.
Great.
Can I just say, what this document is intended to do is help clarify, in some ways, the EDA's recommendation that came to us last month about things that they believe the city could or should do in order to encourage redevelopment by the private sector of that particular property. Some of them, as Michelle mentioned, were traditional incentives. One other was look at the zoning of the property and initiated a discussion, beginning with the planning commission, about does the current zoning structure create the right atmosphere to encourage that redevelopment? And I think the EDA understands that, that there's a defined process for that. It will take some time. And so on their behalf, I'm just conveying what they expressed in the meeting, their perception of a sense of urgency here. Not that necessarily that, although I think they'd be happy if something happened to them, but I think rather than that this be something we think about over the longer term, I think they're hoping it will get some consideration in the near term.
Yeah. I'm just particularly grateful that the conversation is happening so that we're in a position so that when somebody does pull the trigger, you know, we've got all the tools that we need to, to help facilitate and change whatever it takes to make redevelopment happen.
And again, I think, I think the, the EDA is the appropriate forum for these discussions to take place, and, and they, they are an incredibly innovative group, so I'm very encouraged by, by some of the things that their, their ideas they're suggesting and talking about and putting on the table. But again, we, we need time to, to reflect on that, and we can, with a consensus of council, ask planning commission to, to move forward at, at any time. And I understand the, their sense of urgency in this, but we, we will, again, be, be back to them as soon as, as soon as feasible.
I will convey the message.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other new business? Not? That brings us to our final agenda item for the day, open forum. Tom, when anyone who wishes to address council on any issue may do so. If you wish to address council, come forward, state your name and address. I do have one speaker's card, and that's Mr. Gary Shelley. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I am Gary Shelley, and I live at 205 Innes Springs Road. On behalf of both Ms. Carrie Flanagan, who spoke here in open forum in May, and myself, I want to begin by thanking Mr. Tuttle for his apology to us regarding the illegal intrusion onto Ms. Flanagan's property that she was renting from me. Such an acknowledgement by Mr. Tuttle can go a long way in helping to smooth tensions when the city messes up so badly. This incident has become much more than the outrageous violation of Ms. Flanagan's reasonable expectation of privacy. It has yet another example unmasking how the city and its officials operate and how difficult it can be for a citizen to get a response from the city. At previous council meetings, I have stated that we appreciate the service that council members dedicate to our community. We understand that you're not perfect, but we absolutely demand that you be honest, open, transparent, and responsive to us. At the May City Council meeting, Ms. Flanagan spoke not only of this incident, but other incidents she had during her eight-year tenure here. Mayor, you dismissed her with a very insincere, "We regret your unfortunate experience. We try to make everyone feel equal."
It's not insincere.
In July, I spoke and pointedly debunked your claim. I noted the attention that you gave to your friends, but not to students such as Ms. Flanagan. I posed a number of questions which you could have asked Ms. Shelton, but you chose instead to ignore them and to dismiss me. So I sent an email to Mr. Tuttle on August 25th, asking the same questions I asked of you in July. Briefly, these questions included, who was aware of the incident? What is the policy governing where an inspector can walk? And was the policy followed? Was this the only incident of trespass, or have there been other instances? And if so, how many, where, when, and why? On September 2nd, I received the first of two emails from Mr. Tuttle. There was no apology at that time, but there was admission that, and I quote, "Permission should have been obtained from either resident or owner before going behind the building." Mr. Street and Mr. Skinner initiated a consultation with the city attorney to discuss these types of inspections, inspections in general, without specific reference to this incident. And Mr. Tuttle concludes by saying, "I find that the inspection itself was reasonable." No, Mayor, the inspection was certainly not reasonable. At no time did the city cite any violation of any sort in the backyard. In fact, it just so happened that the house had recently been inspected by the city as part of the rental inspection program. The backyard was thoroughly inspected and passed 100% without even the least little violation, so there were no issues there to begin with. Mr. Tuttle further wrote in his email, "Mr. Shelley, this incident happened three years ago. May I ask why your and Ms. Flanagan's concerns are just coming to my attention now?" Yes, Mr. Tuttle, you may ask this question. It is a very good question. And I, too, would like to know why this matter is just now coming to his attention. I'll read to you a couple of emails I sent to the Code's Compliance Director at the time of the incident. "Mr. Skinner, I have once again received a phone call from a very upset temp, distraught might be a better description, regarding someone she believes is from your office trespassing in her backyard. She is one of the women whose possessions you illegally removed from the yard a couple of years ago, and obviously, she is quite sensitive to people she doesn't know facing around in her backyard. I assured her that I would follow up on this. As she said," and I quote her on this, "you would think by now that the city would have learned." I ended my email to Mr. Skinner by saying that I, too, called the police. The next day, Ms. Shelton non-suited the case, and I sent this follow-up email to the city. "Mr. Skinner, today you took me to court only to non-suit without comment. I demand an explanation why you changed your mind." At least, at least, and I'm telling this to Mr. Skinner, in this instance, the city attorney non-suited without making any comment, as opposed to some of the other outrageous lies that she has presented to the court in the past. You've got a lot of explaining to do on this one. Let's face it, your refusal to communicate is a large part of the problem. We will listen, but only if you will talk. So let me read again the question Mr. Tuttle asked in his first email to me. "May I ask why this is just coming to my attention now? You've heard me say before that you have created here a culture where you and your colleagues do not hold yourselves or each other accountable for your actions." You know, wink, wink, nod, nod. Let's review again what happened. Ms. Flanagan called the police. I called the police. I sent an email to the city. I received no reply from the city. I sent another email to the city, and I said, "We will listen if you will communicate." We also know that at that time, Ms. Shelton was aware of the incident. So Mayor, I ask of you, when a member of your staff learns that there has been such an incident caused by actions of the city staff, shouldn't you and the city manager demand that you be informed by that staff? Perhaps Ms. Shelton and Mr. Skinner were afraid to come forth with the truth of what happened. Or more likely, Ms. Shelton understands that by remaining silent, she is providing both you and her plausible deniability. You know, wink, wink, nod, nod. After all, this incident involved a student and a landlord, not one of your buddies. So much for taking responsibility and treating everyone equally. As an aside, the issue that the city handles me was routine painting of a small section of trim on a brick house. During the course of the painting, the inspector sent me a friendly email cautioning me, "Please be very careful, as my ladder was dangerously close to power lines." I responded by letting him know that I appreciated his concern. Too bad that this sort of goodwill has to be undone by you and others on your staff. Mr. Tuttle also states that he knows of no other incidents of trespass on my properties, but perhaps Ms. Shelton does. So why don't you ask her today if she is aware of any? And by the way, after learning that the city has apologized to us, Ms. Flanagan recently sent me this message. "Gary, congratulations on actually getting a valid response from the city for once, even if it took the equivalent of the effort to get a peace treaty in the Middle East. And Mayor, it's now evident that I am the one who for years has been making the effort to communicate. As with numerous other issues, you and the city have been frustratingly uncooperative. I'm not holding my breath, but perhaps today, the city will be willing to communicate. So here's what I'm asking. Why was Mr. Tuttle not informed by Ms. Shelton of this incident? And more importantly, was this the only incident of trespass on my or anyone else's properties, or have there been others? If so, how many, when, where, and why? Will you turn now to ask Ms. Shelton to ask her these questions? Would you order her to send me a report? Or will you once again follow your instincts and run and hide?" Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Shelley. We always appreciate your comments. Does anyone else wish to speak to council on any matter? Sabrina, welcome. Please state your name and address.
Sabrina Fairbanks, 119 Berkeley Lane in the city. I come today as a landlord and also a William &amp; Mary alum, and I've had a very different experience than Mr. Shelley. I'd like to thank you for adopting ordinances that have really been a big help, you know, where our, my rental properties are located. You all ran on the platforms, I believe, of most of you preserving neighborhoods and making things better. And I'm actually here today to not talk about a decal color change, even though you know I'm vitally interested in that. I'd like to talk about maybe some collaboration between the city and the college. And it's, we're at that point now where you have implemented some really good ordinances that deal with occupancy problems and parking problems. And if town and gown relations are as good as everybody says they are right now, this might be a time to, to, for the college to step up and help along those lines. The first thing I would like to suggest is that, like many college towns do, that the city adopt some type of agreement with the college that students would not be able to get their transcripts or their diploma until they settled up with the city and paid their parking fines. Currently, there's many who don't pay. It's cumbersome for the police to track them down. They move at the end, or, or graduate at the end of May, and then they're gone. There's a VW, black VW, sitting on Carrie Street that's been there three days. If it stays this whole school week and doesn't pay those fines with late fees, that driver is going, just for this week, would owe the city $400. And so it would be a good scenario, I think, for, you know, this, this student to call parents and say, "I've got good news and bad news. The good news is I'm getting a degree from William &amp; Mary. The bad news is I've got to pay the city of Williamsburg $400 before I can get my diploma." The next thing would be some collaboration with regard to the college making the occupancy laws of the city in honor code violation. I know that that's come up before because I Googled it, and apparently in 2009, it was discussed around, CNU has, has done this. And I do know that's a fact because my oldest son attends CNU, and they talk about it. You know, they talk about how it's not going to matter where you're going to live because, if you get kicked out of school and your parents don't get that tuition money back. So I know that it can be done, and, you know, the college already has an expectation of lawful and ethical behavior of their students, and if we could just work with them to expand their definition of what the college community is. I, I personally turned in an apartment on Carrie Street in the 2013 school year where there were five students living in a one-bedroom apartment. And they said, you know, "Our responsibility kind of stops at Jamestown Road, and it didn't cross the street to Carrie Street." So I think that needs to change. The other collaboration, and the last one, would be that the college and the city develop a policy where when students, when there is a formal complaint or investigation initiated with regard to breaking city laws, that the college be compelled to provide the student's physical address if it's needed. Historically, what happened is the student's address was in their student directory, and the city did use that to show that they were violating these three-person occupancy laws. But now the, now the students don't have to put it in there. And if, under the guise of privacy, which I understand, but it's my understanding that if the college has a piece of paper, like a search warrant, they will provide that information. So maybe there can be some collaboration about what can be done in what cases to, the college to provide that information to the city. And I think that could really help with some of these issues. Thanks again for all your efforts.
Thank you very much. We appreciate it. Anyone else wish to address council on any matter? If not, that brings our agenda to a close. Any, any other matters?
Reminder about tonight? A reminder about tonight?
I'll remind people about tonight, the seven o'clock in the community building, a meeting on the goals, initiatives, and outcomes for the next biennium. We hope that a number of citizens will attend. I think we've got an interesting process going on. We're going to let you use some clickers again to answer some questions and see, see what people are thinking about, and then also idea trees to, to work with. So I hope all of you here will attend, and anyone watching and others will attend, because I think it will be a great opportunity for communication within the community. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I know you'll be disappointed by this, but I must report there's no items for closing session tonight.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn in a second. Motion in a second. Call the roll, please, Ms. Scott.
Aye.
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 Aye.